I now call the June fourteenth through two thousand and sixteen work session of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. Would Councilmember Gibbon please lead us in the pledge and afterwards I'll offer an invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful that we have an opportunity to serve as members of the city council here in the city of Riverton and pray that we'll have insight and understanding equal to our assignments, that we might represent the people of Riverton well, that we might be able to use our intellect to evaluate the issues that come before us and try to do the best that we can for the citizens of Riverton. And we ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Would the city secretary please conduct roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
My imprisoned declaration that we have a quorum this evening. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda with the addition of a discussion on paramutual bidding after item number eight.
Your Honor, I make the motion that we approve the agenda including the paramutual bidding after item eight.
Second.
The movement seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, motion passes. The first item of business this evening is to talk about our ombudsman and Chief Broadhead would make an introduction here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you all got to meet Jane Juve previously at a meeting, but I just wanted to introduce the segment tonight because she's going to talk to you a little bit about some of the things that she's been doing and where the program is headed. This started out of a discussion we had late last summer and we brought her on board in about February, I think is when she started. And what we've really discovered is that some of this housing law is incredibly complicated. There's federal law, there's state law, there are executive orders being issued by the administrative branch of the federal government that have the impact of law and it's really been more helpful than we expected to have an attorney in this position. And she's issued a few training bulletins for officers already on, you know, proselytizing in public and in the rules about comfort animals and those kind of things so that the officers have some tools if they come across complaints about people bringing animals to the wrong place or, you know, whatever. So, anyway, I just wanted to give a quick introduction to her and how valuable we're already finding her to be and she's got some brochures for you that have been handed out already and we'll let her go from there. So, everybody.
Thank you. It's a pleasure indeed to be back in Riverton and it's a privilege to be here in front of city council. I thank you for the invitation to visit with you and share with you what's been happening so far. I think one of the, I'll just hit straight to the point, I think one of the main questions that may well be on many people's hearts and minds is have there been any calls for service? Have there been any investigations? Have there been any complaints submitted to the office of the ombudsman? And there have. To date, there have been seven calls for service, if you will. There's one ongoing investigation. The majority of the calls that have been received have not really been valid complaints of civil rights violations, but it has been an opportunity to visit with the people who come in or some call and it's just part of the ongoing education process. As I indicated, there is one ongoing investigation. I'm not at liberty, obviously, to discuss the details of that, but it does deal with housing and potential discrimination against a disabled person. Since February, I have, as the chief noted, worked on preparation of training materials on various civil rights topics for the PD. I have put together two basic, very basic information brochures for members of the public and those have been provided to you folks. There are, in the works, I have other brochures on more specific topics in the works and ready, but at this point in time, I think the most important thing, rather than providing a flood of information, is to help people understand what is an ombudsman, what are the, what's the focus, what are the areas that the ombudsman can focus on and take care of. So those brochures that you have in front of you are, what is a community relations ombudsman and basic information on discrimination and protected characteristics. Also in front of you, you should have, or in the packet in front of you, you should have the flyer for the fair housing training that is coming up July twelfth. This has been sent out to, we've coordinated with the Chamber of Commerce, it's been sent out to all those who own rental properties that are listed with the Chamber of Commerce. We've coordinated with the two tribal housing authorities and put it up on the police department's Facebook page. Megan has been kind enough to put it on the city's Facebook page. Trying to get the word out, this training is not just for landlords, this training is for anyone who rents, is a tenant, is a landlord, is purchasing property. One of the reasons that this training is so important is, number one, fair housing law is, in Wyoming, is becoming more of a concern. The governor had, and the state legislature, but the governor has expressed an interest in housing. The state legislature passed Wyoming's Fair Housing Act in two thousand and fifteen. In talking with the fair housing enforcement folks in both Casper and in Denver, apparently in the last two to three years, there have been increased complaints, housing complaints coming out of the state of Wyoming and so the state of Wyoming is becoming a little bit more of a focus for the federal government. The state of Wyoming is in the process of getting approval to enforce fair housing laws itself in Wyoming as opposed to having only the federal government enforce it here. So they're trying to bring it closer to home and have it be state folks enforcing that. So the other thing that makes this fair housing training significant at this point in time is, as the chief noted, there have been a number of different executive orders issued from the executive branch of the federal government, which is called guidance and they are enforcing, HUD is enforcing guidance as though it has the same force and effect as statutory law and administrative law. That is currently a very controversial issue. There is case, there is a case, if not more than one case, in the federal judiciary system as to whether or not that guidance has the force of law, but right now, that's how it's being enforced. And in the area of service animals, in the area of emotional support animals and therapy animals, there's a lot of changes. This training on July twelfth will cover that. Some of those regulations, let me rephrase that, the majority of those regulations deal with government housing projects or housing projects that receive any kind of government funding. That's kind of a given and how it's been for a long time. But some of these guidance rules are applicable to anybody who rents housing without regard to whether they receive federal funding or not. So it's becoming far more important and I think it'll be really helpful to anyone who owns rental property or rents property to attend that. So we have done outreach to the renters, to the landlords, to the housing authorities and members of the public. In terms of the other things that I have occupied my time with, the structural components of the office are in place and by that I mean the investigation procedure manual. So when a case comes in, how is it processed and how does it flow through the system? How do we coordinate with Department of Labor? How do we coordinate with HUD? How do we coordinate with these other things so we're not duplicating efforts? And finally, tonight is the public debut of the webpage. Let me go back first to the police department page. So this page has remained the same with the exception of, down here at the bottom, you'll see community relations ombudsman. And then this is just an introductory paragraph about the, basically, the job description of the ombudsman as long with a logo, one of the primary logos that's on the brochures and different documents that come out of the office of the ombudsman focusing on, we are one community and we're working together. And I think that is true, but I also think that that's something we always need to remind ourselves of and remind each other of, that we really are one community. Every community within this county impacts everything we do, touches and concerns each other and so just to be mindful of that, I think, is very helpful. You will see two places here on the left, as well as a link down here, links down here, duplication there just for ease of use. Filing a complaint. What we've done with the help of I T and I T has just been amazing and incredible, just so helpful on this. Here's what somebody does if they want to file a complaint. If they feel discrimination is happening, they click this link here, which takes you to the intake questionnaire. This is fillable online, so if someone wants, they can fill it out online, print it out, bring it in. They can fill it out online, email it to my office, or they can print it out, fill it out by hand and bring it in or mail it in. So those options are all available. The idea of having an intake questionnaire form is that it really does help people focus on what the facts of their complaint is and get that written down so that it helps to narrow and focus the conversation. Bunch more information there that can be read at your leisure. As noted in the brochure, what, that you have in front of you, what is the community relations ombudsman? Mediation of complaints is one of the services, trying to get people together and talking and working it out themselves. If people are willing and if it's possible, that's one of the goals. And so mediation, there's a document there that just says what that's all about. You also have in front of you, and there's a link on this webpage, to kind of an overview of the whole complaint resolution process. The city is not set up for anyone to hear a case administratively or anything like that. Those cases, if there is no settlement, you know, there's an investigation, a problem is found and the parties are not willing or able to settle it themselves, clearly for almost every civil rights complaint, there is an administrative hearing agency at the state level or at the federal level. And so we have information that we provide to people as to what their alternatives are. And that is, other than the contact information, which is back on the last page, that is it. At this time, I am happy to entertain any questions you may have or provide you with any other information.
Mr. Larson.
I'm wondering, what is the number of complaints that we've had the last ten years?
I do not have that information.
The last five years or last year.
Chief.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, that's one of the issues we're trying to address is that Stephen and I and the mayor have been to meetings over the last few years repeatedly and we hear this complaint keep coming up. We'll meet with the tribes and we'll hear that folks are coming into town and feeling like they're being discriminated against. But to date, there's been no way to track that because no one keeps track of it. There's no place for that person to go and air that complaint. And so what happens is they go home and complain to their family or they get on social media and complain and then without any kind of, you know, opportunity for justice for either side or to try to find the truth, then there's just people that are mad about the issue. So to date, there's been absolutely no tracking of that, so there's no way we could answer that.
So we don't have a record?
We do not have a record.
Best of your memory, what would you say, the number of complaints that you can remember?
Well, again, sir, there's been no avenue for them to complain and so, other than getting it anecdotally, we don't have any complaints that I'm aware of. If a person called and complained to an officer, that officer would say, we don't enforce housing laws, go call an attorney. So there just has been no avenue for those complaints to be recorded or filed or investigated.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, then that concludes my presentation and thank you very much for your time and attention.
And your office is here in the city hall?
Yes, it is. I'm right next door to the police department. I'm in the same office with Cindy Guston, the victim witness coordinator.
Okay, okay, so the people can get to you without going through the police department?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And my name's on the, on the.
On the door.
On the door, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jane, for coming and telling us about it. The next item is Job Corps, Julie Gassner.
Well, good evening. Thank you so very much for having myself and I have the lovely Miss Krista Stream joining me. She's our business community liaison and outreach and admissions coordinator. So we were asked to provide you with an update. Where have we come? Where are we now? So please make a mental note that the timeline you see on the presentation, it should be August fourth, two thousand and fifteen, not two thousand and fifteen. But we do have some handouts for you all, but I thought I would just kind of give you the brief background. Back in May of two thousand and fifteen, our company, Management Training Corporation, was a successful bidder and awarded the contract to operate the Wind River Job Corps Center. So we appreciate all of you, your hard work, to bring this center to the great state of Wyoming so that the youth of Wyoming can be better served for their education and training needs. So if you can picture, some of you from the ground up, from the dirt up on the hill, watching the construction over the years. So on May first, when we arrived, it was empty buildings. There was nothing there. There was me and I had a host of folks to help support us and we had a deadline of August fourth to populate it with students. So it started out with, okay, we need some furniture. So we got some temporary furniture, then we got some permanent furniture, then we needed to hire some people. So we started to bring on our staff, we started out with the management team and eventually we started bringing on our teachers, our counselors, some residential staff, so it's been a gradual buildup. And we got the computers and we got the curriculum, then we started training staff. And so August fourth, we were able to arrive our first students. Seven, we called them the magnificent seven, those seven students were oh so loved. They had no television, they had no internet, they had no recreational activities, they loved that little thing called a hacky sack. So those students can truly appreciate where we have come to today, where we are sitting right at almost two hundred and thirty students. Our goal is to have three hundred, but we've come a long way. This Friday, we will have our first formal graduation, which will be at two o'clock up on the center. Everybody is invited, we welcome you. We will, over the course of our time, have probably four graduations a year, about every quarter. This graduation, we have thirty-three students who are eligible to participate in the ceremonies. That means they successfully completed the program by earning their high school education if they needed that, as well as their trade, or they just came to us and earned their trade. Twenty-three of those students have decided to participate in the ceremonies and so that's probably about an average size if we do them on a quarterly basis. And then once, you know, as we evolve over time, it might go down to that we have graduations three times a year. So that's just kind of a brief little overview from, from May of two thousand and fifteen to today, June thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. So with that, we'll go ahead and go into a little bit more detail, please, at any time, feel free to ask any questions that you might have. I'm happy to answer anything and be interactive, but I'll let Krista help me with the maneuvering of the slides. So going back to in the beginning, we had to come up with a mission for our center, for the Wind River Job Corps Center. And the picture that we shared with you, many of you may recall this, this was October third, when we had our dedication, we had lots of dignitaries and all of the special people that helped to bring the center to the state of Wyoming as well as other honorable guests from the community and throughout the state. So we were proud to celebrate that. So the management team worked hard with the students' collaboration to come up with our mission statement and that Wind River Job Corps Center will provide the building logs for energy and construction careers for motivated young adults pursuing career and technical training, education in a safe and secure environment. So those kind of encompass all of the purposes of Job Corps and will help to answer some of those questions that people ask, who is appropriate for Job Corps? These are, they're motivated young adults, they want to be here, they want more out of life, they want to further their education, their skills and train, and they want to do that in a safe and nurturing environment. So we hope that we will feel this mission every day. Yes?
Please, speak in the mic.
I would love to.
Sir, you can move that, you can move.
I can move it around. Okay, there we go, perfect. Okay, so just a brief highlight, what is Job Corps? Again, it's the nation's largest career technical training program. We've been operating for over sixty years. It's a model that works. It is one of a kind in the sense that it's a residential program where students get to come and they get fully submerged in all aspects of the learning environment. So it's not just academics, it's not just trade, it's social skills, it's problem solving, it's community service, what does it mean to give back? It's the holistic approach to a student to help them become contributing members of or their communities that they will either stay in or go back to. Again, over two point seven million students have been served in Job Corps and, excuse me, have been served annually and approximately sixty thousand. So again, as I stated, our center will serve three hundred when we reach our full capacity and on average, in the course of a year with students that come and go, those that are successful and those that sometimes figure out that, hey, Job Corps is not for me, will average about four hundred and fifty students coming through our doors in a year. And Job Corps takes pride in a very diverse population and so you'll see some of those stats as we get further along in who are our students and where do they come from. So lots of people want to know what has been the impact to this beautiful project that is up on the hill. And so we're pleased that Job Corps spends, year to date, from May until today, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand with local vendors and some change. So some of those local vendors are Wind River Transit Authority, the airport, our local stores, copies, purchasing, you know, running down and getting supplies, different services, fuel, just to name a few, laundry services, those are things that we are purchasing here in the local community. Community service hours, that's a big thing. Job Corps is proud of saying that, you know, over a thousand hours will go into this community. So I am pleased to share with you, our students have performed, I'll call it skill, applied skills training in the community where they get to test what they've learned, seven thousand six hundred and eighty-four hours. So you break that down, they have participated in off-center skills, career technical skills training, three hundred and forty-eight hours. Places like, they've gone to Casper, been in a job fair, they've been at the city of Lander, Lucid Optics, plus electric are just examples. Field trips, they go into the community to learn, is this trade, is this field really what I want to do? One hundred and twenty-four hours. Wyoming Machinery, Precision Analysis, the city of Riverton wastewater and Lander City plumbing. Off-center internships, ninety-six hours. We have an expectation that every student will participate in four to six weeks of an unpaid internship, or we call it work-based learning. And so we're just getting started with that as our students approach the fifty percent mark in their training. And so those ninety-six hours are Sletton Construction out on the school that's being built out in Fort Waschiki and then YDOT also was a host. Off-center job shadowing, again, is this really what I want to do? Is this the career path for me? Five hundred and fifty-seven hours. Rocky Mountain Premix, Pre-Tech, Hill Electric, C W C, J R's Welding, Hoffman Electric, Libby's Construction and Shoshone Rose Casino, just to name a few. And then lastly, the off-center community service where they're giving back to this community, four hundred and eleven hours. Paws Animal Shelter has been one. Krista can share some of our other exciting activities?
So last week, we went down to the Lander Community Center to help them build up for the upcoming year, both for that and as well as for the rodeo grounds for Fourth of July. This, these numbers don't reflect what we're doing with the Darcy Zimmer Trail. Our students are currently working on that. It's a very large project where they're breaking up the pathway so walkers, strollers, runners, bikers can go on on that project. It's a mile and a half worth of the roadway and so these numbers don't reflect it because it's not completed yet. So, so there are a lot more hours. We also ask if you guys have any, any need for us in the community. We feel it's important for our students to give back to the community that's given so much to us, so please let us help any way that you know.
Excellent. So then you want to know, hey, who have you employed? Where do they come from? So we've employed a hundred and eighteen employees year to date. So you can appreciate there are those students, or those employees that adjusting to a new company. Our company employs over nine thousand, we're a global company, we're a large organization. Our facility employs a hundred and eighteen. So with that, we have, you know, processes and we have structures, we have probationary periods and it's important to us, our commodity that we work with is people and those young adults deserve the very best. And so it's important that we train staff that come, that they're excellent role models, they're mentors, and that they monitor those student behaviors so that they will leave our program being outstanding citizens. So a hundred and eighteen employees year to date and over four million dollars is what has been paid in salaries, benefits, et cetera. And so those are dollars that are spent for rent, for gas, for groceries, for entertainment, et cetera, in our community. The question is, where do these employees come from? They came from Fremont County predominantly. There was five of us that came from outside of the state that had Job Corps experience that came from our company. We picked up a couple individuals that were prior Wyoming residents, Fremont County specific, that wanted to come back home and so they had that opportunity and they're back in their home community and they were able to relocate here. But for the most part, these employees are here in Riverton, they're in Lander. in Riverton, they're in Lander, they're in Fremont County. So who are these people that are up there on that hill? Our students are sixteen to twenty-four years in age. Today, we have two-hundred-and-twenty-eight students. Every Monday, we arrive new students. When we get to, again, that full capacity, and we kind of have our rhythm going, we anticipate that we'll have nine students graduating every week, and nine students arriving, because we'll want to maintain that three-hundred onboard strength or student population. So the demographics and the diversity, twenty-seven percent of our students are identified as Native American. Forty-three percent of those students come from Wyoming. Twelve percent are non-residential students. We have the capacity of the three-hundred that forty students can be here in the local community, living within a thirty-mile radius. And that means that they get to go home every day and every night. So what makes a non-residential student is that they usually have family commitments, so their parents. They have children, they have childcare, they're contributing to a household income. Those family supports allow for them to come up to the center, Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM, get their education and their training, and then go home and be the moms and the dads that they need to be. And so they can have it all. Twenty-seven percent of our two-hundred-and-twenty-eight are females, and our average age is nineteen-point-four. Our minor population, sixteen- and seventeen-year-olds, roughly, I've got about thirty students that are put into that category. It's difficult to be a minor at Wind River Job Corps Center, because I don't let them go home or into the community unescorted unless they're going with their legal parent or guardian. And the reason for that is their safety. They're our responsibility, and if God forbid, something were to happen to them in the community, it would be, be our responsibility. So we want to make sure that if they're going on a weekend pass, or going into the community, that they're going with their parent or legal guardian. Our adults, they're coming into the community, you might see them at Walmart, you might see them at the grocery store, you might see them at a hotel. I am hopeful that nobody has any major concerns that I'm not aware of already. I am pleased that, that we, we do keep in contact with the local hotels, we do keep in contact with the, with the merchants, to make sure that our students are respectful, and that they represent Wind River Job Corps and this community well, and that they respect it. So if you are hearing anything to the contrary, I do want to know, because it's important to us. We appreciate the law enforcement support that we have. They've been very valuable in coming up to the center to ensure that we have safe and secure facilities, and that our students aren't bringing up anything that is considered unauthorized. And tomorrow, they'll be visiting at us, and we greatly appreciate those opportunities. So our motto, it's important that we're energy and conservation ignite to create sustainable futures. So with that, every Thursday, we do a breakfast with our brand-new students. And I tell them, do we agree that as human beings that we produce energy? And they're like, well, yeah, we do. So I asked them, I said, every morning before you get up, you lay there in that bed and you think, what kind of day am I going to have? Am I going to put that positive toe down first, where the day's going to go well, and you know, whatever roadblock or obstacle comes my way, I can handle it? Or am I going to put that negative energy down? And then you guaranteed, that you know, it's going to be the worst day of your life, you're going to hate it, and you're going to leave. So I encourage them that we, as humans, that we do produce that positive energy, and that they choose that. That, you know, with that mindset, they can get through anything. So with that motto, the successes that we are currently experiencing. So our report card is something that was measured by the Department of Labor, and we have two years before we formally go on to this report card. The reason for that is, we're a brand-new facility, we need to build our systems and our procedures in place, and we need to build our pools. And those pools are our students. But to date, we are number one in primary credentials. Those are the credentials that employers have said, this is important for you to have, if you want to be employed in my field. We are number one in graduate placement. Now, while my numbers are small, every single student that has left our program as a graduate has left with a job. So they're employed. The job training match, it's also important. If you come to me for welding, or carpentry, or heavy equipment operator, or mechanic, I want you to get a job in that field. You didn't need Wind River Job Corps Center to get a job outside of those fields, you wanted to come to get those skills. And so we're number one in that match as well. Students are getting jobs in the fields that they studied for. And then former enrollees, these are students who did not successfully complete the program, for whatever reason, but they were in the program for sixty days or more. I have an obligation from day one to make sure that they have a plan for their future. So they receive three months of placement services to make sure that, while my program might not have been what was a best fit for them, we're going to get them connected to another educational system, an alternative school, high school, maybe it's another training program, maybe it's the military, et cetera. But we're going to get them connected something to another career-oriented training path. And so we're number one in that. So those students that didn't make it, they are on to still being successful. And then lastly, the full-time placement of our graduates. So thirty-two hours or more is what we want our students to be placed at, and that's what we consider full-time. Some of our highlights of students for this placement, we have a young lady who completed the Heavy Equipment Operators Program. She went to Green River, and she's making twenty-eight dollars an hour as a heavy equipment operator. She was a single mother, she had three children, and she's making it on her own. We have our first young man who completed the program, who's going to CWC, in what we consider advanced career training. So he completed his basic welding training, and now he's enrolled at CWC as of May thirty-first, and he will be a college student full-time. He has up to two years to earn his associate's degree. Another student was our first to go to advanced training at another Job Corps Center in Georgia. It's called the Turner Job Corps Center, where he's going to further pursue his credentials and training in the heavy equipment operations. And then lastly, we have one young man who's been accepted into the Marine Corps, and he has a ship date in September. So that's just an example of some of the placements of the successful graduates that they've had. There's been others. But just to kind of give you an idea of what we consider a positive placement, going straight into the workforce, college, advanced training, the military, apprenticeship programs, or AmeriCorps. So some upcoming events. How can we have you be a part of the center? We have our first graduation, as shared, on Friday, June seventeenth, at two o'clock. We have a community relations council that meets four times a year. That's for individuals such as yourselves, that can give us the feedback, how are we doing? What are you hearing in the community? Help us to get the word out about the great things that are happening with our students, and the opportunities for employers, as well as those community service projects, work-based learning sites, et cetera. So that next meeting will be on July fourteenth, and that's at ten AM up at the center. And then lastly, we have a workforce council. Those meetings happen twice a year, and that's for the industries. We offer ten vocations. And so we're looking for those industry experts that can come in, review our curriculum, make sure that we're teaching on today's latest skills, what is the trends in the future, and that we will have a viable product, if you will, and a successful employee when they leave the program. And so that next meeting is September thirteenth at one PM. And so last but not least, how you can reach us, if you have any questions, myself or Krista, we are happy to, to provide tours, to host meetings. Again, anything that I've not provided for you, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Julie. Lee?
Julie, I have one question, is on the single-parent housing.
Yes.
Anything come up yet on that?
Well, so Mr. Bowers, we have been working casually with the Wyoming Business Council to see about tapping into some resources that they may have available for that. So we are exploring that opportunity right now.
Thank you.
You bet. Because what we know is that that will help, really, with our numbers for our female recruitment, if they have the housing for, for them and their families. Yeah.
Mr. Glenn?
Ma'am, again, I know it's, it's early on, but do you have a rough idea of the, of the percentage of kids that are completing the program? I mean, I know if you have, as opposed to the ones, like you said, that have decided it's not for them for one reason or the other.
Mm-hmm. So our retention rate into the program is over eighty-five percent. So of that two-hundred number, eighty-five of those students have stayed in the program. And so who's projected for graduation? That, does that help to answer that question?
Because I mean, I, I know you're, you're pretty strict on, you know, what, how the kids behave, and what they can get into, so.
Absolutely.
I realize that there's going to be a percentage that you're going to tell to...
Unfortunately, yep. They will either make that choice, or I'll have to make that for them.
Mr. Larson?
I noticed that you've got twenty-seven percent Native Americans. I'm wondering, how do we target more? How do we get more?
Go.
So you will actually hear a radio end with one of our successful building construction technology students that are coming out. And we recorded it yesterday with Restle Radio. She is a success story from the reservation, local girl from E30 Wyoming Indian student. We're also attending the safety fair, and we have a outreach admissions person that, that handles the reservation. So we're attending the, the, locally, we're attending the high schools, we're making it known, we're utilizing our resources of a successful students to reach out to their family members, and, and bring the ones that are ready for the change themselves.
So you're actively recruiting, then?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Thank you.
And to tap on that, to receive our students, there's another contract, and, and that's the outreach and admissions. And so there's two companies that help with that outreach. They're the ones that are in the schools, they're at the social service agencies. So Colorado Wyoming, or CHP, operates and covers Wyoming and Colorado, and then Utah Montana covers those two states. And so they have resources outside of the center, who are out in the communities, finding those young adults that are eligible for the program. And then the center, our role is to help promote those success stories in the community. And word of mouth is our best marketing for students to know about the program.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Julie, for coming. Let me say that I am a member of the Community Relations Council, and so I meet with Job Corps on a quarterly basis. And a couple of weeks ago, we were invited up to Job Corps, the chief and I went up, and we visited with Department of Labor people, who wanted to get their, get our opinion of how Job Corps is doing in Riverton and that type of thing. And so I'd have to say that we've got a terrific amount of outreach from Job Corps and the Department of Labor to the city of Riverton, to try to make this a smooth relationship. And, and, you know, things are going great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, you bet. Thank you for, thank you for coming this evening. The next thing we've got on the agenda this evening is a presentation. Mr. Eugene Joyce is here with Lori Stickles and Urbikite. And, and they're going to talk about paramutual bedding. And I may remember, like, a couple of years ago, Mr. Joyce came and talked to city council. And, and so this is kind of a follow-up on that a little bit, and an extension, some expansion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor said, my name's Eugene Joyce. My company is Wyoming Horse Racing LLC. We started back in two thousand and eleven to try to bring back live horse racing to the state of Wyoming. At the time, there hadn't been a live horse race in two years, and the OTB system, the simulcast system, that really generates the money to support live horse racing was nonexistent. And so we, we started a company to, number one, get live horse racing going. We started at Sweetwater Downs with just four race days in two thousand and eleven. And from there, we, we expanded, we wanted to expand to Casper and Gillette, but the revenue just wasn't there. Now, I had the delusion that I could get this done. And to my great good fortune, I met Lori Urbikite back in December of two thousand and eleven. And we talked about an idea that was quite revolutionary at the time. It was being done in Arkansas and Kentucky. And what it was doing was taking old horse races and putting them on self-serve wagering terminals to try to attract a new customer base to generate revenue for the horse racing industry. You think of Kentucky, what, what would they need that for? Kentucky had the same problem Wyoming did at the, at the time. There were other states bordering Kentucky that had gaming that were supplementing horsepurses. And so Kentucky, people that lived in Kentucky had to go outside the state to race and to breed their horses. And so that was what was going on in Wyoming. Breeders right here in Riverton and in Fremont County. In fact, one of the largest breeders is Dr. Whip, a local resident here. And when we started, the amount of money in the Wyoming Bread Fund, which is the incentives for people to breed Wyoming racehorses, was about forty-thousand dollars. Now, getting back to the magician back here, where are you? There you are. Lori, we put together a bill, and we had two good sponsors, Senator Schiffer and Representative Sue Wallace. But in meeting with them, Lori came up with an idea to take a part of the paramutual tax and give it directly to the cities and counties where this activity would take place. And that was a big reason that we were able to pass that bill in, in February of two thousand and thirteen. And so since that time, we've gone from four days of live horse racing to ten the next year, then twenty, and then this past year, we had thirty-one days of live horse racing in the state. The Breed Fund that generates the money to incentivize Wyoming residents to breed racehorses, went from forty thousand four years ago, and last year was one-point-one million dollars. And so we have people moving into the state, buying property to breed and raise Wyoming horses that will be running in the coming years at four racetracks that are up and operating right now in, in the state that were not operating four years ago. And that's Wyoming Downs and Evanston, and the three tracks that I operate, Energy Downs at the Complex in Gillette, the Central Wyoming Fairgrounds, we have a race meet in Casper, and Sweetwater Downs in Rock Springs. And it's all because of the revenues generated from historic horse racing. And, and just, this is just a perspective, and this, we're, we're working on a new updated economic impact report, but, you know, these figures are fifteen years old, but it, it shows you the amount of money that is produced by the horse industry and the jobs that are associated with the horse racing industry in the state. Now, like I said, we have to update those numbers. Those were, you know, ten years ago, and when we had a big downturn, but now they're starting to build back up. So, and again, speaking about the revenue, we, we, we passed the bill in January, it was signed by the governor in March, and we started to promulgate the rules. So we really didn't get started until the end of two thousand and thirteen. So we've been growing since, in fourteen and fifteen. And in that time, in those two years, we've generated over four million dollars in revenue for the counties and the cities where the OTBs operate and where they have historic horse racing. And again, another two million dollars for the, for the state of Wyoming. So here, here are some of the counties where we operate. There are thirteen paramutual counties in Wyoming. And they, the reason there's thirteen was back in nineteen sixty-seven, there was a statute passed to allow paramutual wagering on horse racing. And at that time, the counties had a county-wide referendum whether they wanted it or not. And so thirteen counties passed it. And, you know, part of the approval process, because of that statute, is that if we want to operate off-track bedding in a, in a county, we have to have county permission. And so we will be going to Fremont County. However, I thought it was best, as someone who wants to operate in this city, to come to you, introduce myself, and only right and fitting and proper, to make sure that you know what our plans are. You can have some input. We're here to, you know, hear your thoughts on this. And we certainly wouldn't want to go in front of the Fremont County Commissioners without the city of Riverton wanting us to, to come in here. And so that's part of this outreach today. And so here's just some of the numbers, and these are some of the counties. And as you can see, I mean, the high-water mark is, is, Laramie has benefited to the tune of six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. You know, but even, you know, Uwena County, which doesn't have... You know, but even, you know, Uwena County, which doesn't have much of a population, has gotten ninety-five thousand dollars. And then here are some of the monies that have gone to the cities. So we're currently, I operate currently in six counties. And again, we kind of chose the counties with the biggest population to start off with, but we're starting to generate some good cash flow, and we want to have a footprint in all thirteen counties, which is why we're here in Fremont. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we did have an OTB here several years ago, and this was before this, the House Bill twenty-five was passed. And we were, you know, we tried it, we were up and operational for a year, but there wasn't a lot of interest in the, in simulcasting in the county. And that proved true throughout the state, you know, with the new technologies. Most people were betting on horses through the internet. They weren't walking into an OTB to wager. And so, and again, that was part of the catalyst of trying to come up with a new revenue stream. And we have, and it's benefiting cities and counties at a time, right now, when oil and gas is down. And so, you know, we're here to be a good corporate citizen. We're here to contribute. I think that if you talk to the state Paramutual Commissioner Charlie Moore or his chief investigator, Chris Walsh, they can tell you that we run a clean operation. We pride ourselves in great customer service, a friendly atmosphere. We do not want trouble. Most people that come and wager, they're not looking to get rowdy or to get into fights or what have you, and they just want to come and be entertained, and it's a form of entertainment. And that's what we try to do, and, but also, you know, benefit as many people as we can. The tax on this activity is one point nine percent of the gross handle, and that is split up a half percent to the city where the activity takes place, a half percent to the county where the activity takes place, a half percent to the state Paramutual Commission, and then four tenths of one percent to the Wyoming Bread Fund. And to put that in perspective, the commission that we live off of is about seven and a half percent. So ninety-two and a half percent of all the monies that are wagered at our locations go back to the betting public, whereas the lottery, the takeout, is fifty percent. Okay? So, you know, sometimes we see some of the gross numbers that this activity takes in. It looks like there's a, you know, you know, people are mortgaging their house and betting on it. But the reality is, they put in a small amount of money, and they're able to play it for a long amount, a long time. So our tax, that one point nine percent of the gross out of our seven and a half percent is roughly about twenty-six percent tax on our activity, on our revenue. And we're happy to pay it. And, you know, again, one of the things, one of the reasons it was passed was because of this revenue stream to the cities and counties. So, you know, we've been growing for the last two years. We continue to grow. Here's the horse race dates that are just, you know, off the charts right now. It's benefiting, you know, our introduction into this community, I think, will benefit you in a couple of ways. We hope to create twelve full-time jobs at our location. The money there is going to go directly to Riverton and Fremont County. And last but not least, it's going to go to generating live horse race dates that help the breeders here in Fremont County, not to mention add to the incentive funds that help them, motivate them to breed more horses. So with that, that's, you can tell I'm a little passionate about this. It's, live horse racing is something I've been involved with for thirty-five years. I first came out to Wyoming in nineteen eighty-nine, fell in love with horse racing, fell in love with Wyoming, and I just fell in love. Met my wife here, got married here, had a home here ever since. I've traveled around, I've run a couple of major racetracks, including Lone Star Park in Dallas and Turf Paradise in Phoenix. And I say that all to, not impress you, but to impress upon you that our number one goal is live horse racing. That's why we do what we do. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions from you or the council.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Bailey?
So you said you have to get the approval of the county. Does that take like a vote, or is this the county commission, or?
It could be done one of two ways. It can either be a resolution or just a simple up-and-down vote by the county commissioners. And that was, that was the way we were approved last time in twenty-eleven, or twenty-twelve, I believe. So, and again, the statutes didn't take into account the local municipalities. Like, they just assumed that a business operator would come in and reach out and make sure that comply with ordinances and what have you. And so that's what we've always started at the city level, because that's where we're going to be, you know, operating within the city limits, and then move on to the county to get that approval.
And then what type of a facility do you operate? I mean, is it restaurant and bar, sports bar kind of an atmosphere, or what are you?
Yeah, I don't.
How does it work where you only have thirty-one race days?
Well.
You do the other three hundred and thirty days.
At the off-track betting site. And again, when I was at Turf Paradise, we had, I ran over sixty OTBs throughout the state of Arizona. And, you know, we had them at the VFW, we had them in pizza parlors, we had them at bowling alleys, we had them in bars, we had them in restaurants. And we've done it two ways so far here in the state of Wyoming. One is, we just rent a storefront, and there's no food and beverage associated with it, non-smoking. I mean, we offer coffee or pop and snack food and what have you. And the other way we do it is to go into a bar like Bombers in Rock Springs or the Beacon Club in Mills, Wyoming, and we lease a small part of their floor, and they, they take care of the food and beverage, and we just focus on the bets on the horse racing.
Your Honor?
Just one clarification to the voters approved this in Fremont County in the late nineteen-sixties. It was like nineteen sixty-seven, I think, that actually went out to vote, and that's what he was talking about with the different counties that approved this, and some of them did not, but Fremont County did.
Chief?
Mr. Joyce, I hate to be ignorant, but can you explain, like, what is the, how do you bet on previously-run horse races? I don't understand the mechanics of it.
Great question. We haven't answered it for three years. So basically, you know, betting tastes have changed over the years, and the younger generations like more electronic-looking games. And so what a self-serve wagering terminal looks like, we take three horse races that we don't tell you where it was run, the date it was run, who the jockeys were, who the trainers were. But we give you betting information so that you can exercise skill and judgment in making your wagering choice. And so you can pull up a handicapping screen, and it'll give you the jockey statistics, it'll give you the horse or trainer statistics, and you can make a choice based on that. Now, absent that, you can also just take what the off odds were at the time of that race and just, and just do that. But, and what we do is, once you make your selections, we give you an entertaining display on the outcome to tell you what you've won based on your wagers on those races.
Okay, thanks.
So basically, it's, there's like twenty thousand or more races that have been videoed across the, that are in this database, and so they're all shuffled around, and you don't know when you sit down what race is going to.
Great. Thanks.
Mr. Peterson?
So you have thirty-one days that you will operate?
I have sixteen race days that I operate at three locations. Wyoming Downs runs the other, the other race.
Right, but I'm saying, if you were to come into Riverton, you would do thirty-one days of racing?
Good question, no, and I wasn't clear on this. The way the statutes and everything is written is that the horse clearly comes before the cart. You have to apply and be granted live horse racing dates before you can go and apply for a simulcast license, which allows you to run an off-track betting site three hundred and sixty-five days a year, if you want, because there's horse racing going on, I think, every day in North America except for Christmas Day. And so we operate these satellite locations away from the racetrack to generate the revenue that supports the live horse racing. So in our location here, we'll probably be open three hundred and sixty-four days out of the year, roughly from about ten AM to midnight.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out, if you did thirty-one days, how are you going to have twelve full-time jobs? Because I'm now in the market for a job, if that's what.
Mr. Larson?
So I understand that you've got thirty-one days. The other days, you're pulling in off-track betting from other race cor, racehorse, like from California or.
Correct.
Florida, or wherever the place might be.
Correct, correct. So you could walk in on a Saturday afternoon and bet Belmont Park in New York or Santa Anita in California, and the races will be displayed up on the TV screens, and you can get a program and handicap and wager on those races.
Okay. One more question.
Mr. Larson?
So what do you need our, our input for?
Well, I'm just trying to be a good neighbor, and I don't want to sneak into town in the dead of night and have you wake up one day and say, how'd this guy get here? So I'm just here really to let you know what we're, what we're doing and what our objectives are, and if there's any input on how we operate, I'm, we want to be part of this community. We want to hear what you have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Chief?
Mr. Joyce, one more question. Do you do, how is the payout handled? Is that a cash transaction typically? You know, how is that going to happen?
Typically, the way we do it is that we don't like to carry a lot of cash, so we reserve the right, any wager that we're going to pay up above two thousand dollars, we will, we will write a check to the person. And the way that works is that checkbook is a zero-balance account until somebody says, somebody's won, and I wrote a check to Joe so-and-so, then I, then we give him the check, he goes the next day down to the bank to get the, get the cash.
What about the historical machines? How are the?
The people put cash into them, and then they get a voucher that comes out of them, and then they would go over to the cashier window and cash out.
Great, thank you.
Your Honor? So.
Go ahead.
The last time this was brought forward, a couple of years ago, they went in front of the commission, asked that the city of Riverton kind of essentially give a blessing. They didn't want to prove something in our community that no one wanted. And so I think we're kind of doing this the right way this time. And so it's not that we need a motion, but we, I think they're going to ask for a letter of support so they can take it to the commission and say that Riverton is fine with this. And when you look in our ordinances, it's allowed in our ordinances.
So I guess, I guess maybe, does anybody have any heartburn over the mayor writing a letter of support? No. No heartburn?
Put the tongues away. Don't need to.
Okay, so we'll put something together.
God bless you.
All right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
Thank you, council.
You bet. Thanks for coming. The only other issue here that I'd like to bring up before we adjourn is, a week or so ago, I got a call from Pat Lawson with the Veterans Folks, and they're talking about this, a Korean War recognition that's going to take place in Lander. And apparently, the, the South Korean ambassador to the United States is going to come on June thirtieth to Fremont County and make some words to people who served in the Korean War. And they're going to have, they have several stops in the state of Wyoming. So they're going to take, start off in Cheyenne, they're flying on the governor's plane with the governor, and they're going to hit several stops around Wyoming. They expect to get here about, you can imagine how this is going to work, they're going to get here about two forty-five, okay? They have three presentations to make that day, they think it maybe will take an hour. It's going to be at the Lander Community Center, and so it's an opportunity to recognize these individuals who served in the, in the Korean War here from the state of Wyoming. And so I won't be here that day. I would like to attend that, but I'm not going to be able to, since Lee's our council president, I've asked him to go, and he said he'll be able to do that. But I wanted to make sure that, that I knew, we've got other people here with military backgrounds and experience, and they've, they opened it up to really anybody. And then Pat, I don't know if she's formalized this or not, but she was interested in coming next week as comments from the floor to invite us all to attend this, and then use the television as a way to, to promote it in the community so that, you know, a lot of people would know that the South Korean ambassador and the governor are going to be here to participate in this and make this recognition. So if there's other people in the council that are interested in attending and representing us there, that would be welcome. And so it's June thirtieth, that's going to be at about two forty-five. But I think we're going to have to kind of queue up there around two o'clock, and then be prepared to hang out until, until the governor's plane arrives. They've apparently got transportation, you know, from the airport down to the community center, which is a couple of blocks, and then as soon as they get done with that, they'll put them back on the plane and go someplace else.
Your Honor?
Lee?
Just a little levity here. When I read the email for Mayor Baker asking me to be the representative, I read it wrong. So on May thirtieth, I was in Lander visiting three different places trying to find out where this was at, and it was actually June thirtieth, so I only missed it by a month.
At least you're early.
Yeah, uh-huh. It's better than being late, right?
Way better than being late.
Yeah, way better.
And the neat part about it, too, is, as we get to Lander, we decided, well, heck, there's no meetings, so we'll go golfing.
A jet plane left Lander Airport, and I thought it was the governor, and I says, oh, boy, I missed it.
Anybody else got any comments they'd like to make, or are we done this evening? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourned at eight oh five.